Being held remotely is determined that it's not practical nor prudent for the Commission and its committees to meet in. The first one to Minnesota Statute, Section 13, two. In light of the ongoing pandemic, it is not feasible for the Planning Commission to be present at its regular location. So we will begin this meeting with a roll call. Simon, could you do that, please?
Commissioner Anderson? Commissioner Baker? Commissioner DeJoy?
Here.
Commissioner Grill?
Here.
Commissioner Hood?
Here.
Commissioner Holst? Commissioner Kentner?
Commissioner Mitchell?
Here.
Commissioner Moore?
Here.
Commissioner Perry?
Commissioner Presley? Commissioner Riley? Commissioner Reisberg?
Here.
Here.
Commissioner Said?
Here.
Commissioner Taggeoff?
Here.
Commissioner Yang?
Here.
And of course, the Chair. Okay.
So we will begin today's meetings with the announcements that I would have for today is, and I'm sure maybe Director Pereda will comment some more on this, but the presentation that we had on the Planning Commission authorities will have to be delayed. We learned yesterday that Mr. Warner, the city attorney that helps us with these type of issues, is having technical difficulties in logging on or with his computer and has been trying to resolve them all day yesterday and into today. And it sounds like it's an ongoing issue with other individuals that use the city services. So it's very unfortunate that we have to delay it, but we'll put it on for the item on the next agenda in two weeks. And hopefully, we can have that presentation at that time. However, we did have an ongoing discussion this morning, the Steering Committee members did, before the Planning Commission, where we discussed sort of the process going forward. I believe we are getting really close to having the final drafts of any proposals that we would make. And we could have Director Pereda comment on any of that with regards to whether he'll be sending that out in this upcoming week.
Good morning. Good morning, Commissioners. Hope you're well. I don't have any other announcements other than just to echo what the Chair just said. The Steering Committee has been working closely with staff on a draft Planning Commission resolution related to initiation of inclusionary zoning study, as well as sort of a cover letter that would go with that. And so we've been working through the details of that, and we have maybe one or two remaining questions to run by Peter Warner from the City Attorney's Office. But when we're able to do that, we hope that the item will be ready for your consideration as soon as next meeting, in addition to the presentation that will inform that. We didn't have a City Council meeting this week, so there's nothing to report on that end. Thank you.
Thank you, Luis. Is there any questions before we move on to the next item on the agenda? The next item is zoning committee. Commissioner Baker?
Thanks, Chair. Good morning, Commissioners. I'll start with the site plan review. There's a site plan review meeting scheduled for April 6th with one item. It's the Montgomery Place, East and West, 1515 and 1525 Marshall Place. It's a new residential. For the upcoming zoning committee meeting, these are the items that will be on the agenda. We have two, 1053 Dale Street North rezoning from R4-1 Family Residential to T2 Traditional Neighborhood, and 444 Maryland Avenue West rezoning from B1 Local Business District to T2 Traditional Neighborhood. So I am asking that you bear with me on this first item of old business, understanding that it was laid over at least one time for zoning committee, but it is Grand Cleveland, the Grand Cleveland Parking Lot. So 2060 Summit Avenue Site Plan Review for a parking lot condition amendment. The zoning committee voted 7-0 during the March 11th meeting to lay over this application to the next zoning committee meeting. The goal in laying it over was to get more information and history about the site from staff. So just to provide you some background, so back in 2004, the Planning Commission issued a conditional use permit, expanding University of St. Thomas campus to include the two blocks bounded by Summit, Cleveland, Grand, and Creedon Avenues. Move forward to 2005, the Planning Commission also approved the site plan for McNeely Hall on the southwest corner of Summit and Cleveland Avenues. The site plan included a 32-space surface parking lot at the northwest corner of Cleveland and Grand Avenues. The Planning Commission at the time believed surface parking was an acceptable use on the corner on an interim basis for a period not to exceed 10 years. And so move forward to 2014, the Planning Commission approved the University of St. Thomas application to extend the interim use of the site as a surface parking lot for an additional three years. And then again, move forward to 2018, the Planning Commission agreed to approve a three-year extension for the parking lot. That extension was set to expire in March of this year. Based on the findings, staff recommended approval of the modification of a condition of previous planning commissions. And really, what it was stating is for the parking lot to remain, to be allowed to remain indefinitely. So during our last committee meeting, staff amended the recommendation to include the parking lot remaining through the end of March 2036, and two conditions. Approval of the zoning administrator and on or before, and on or before March 31st, 2036, a site plan application shall be submitted for the subject property for either continued use as a parking lot or for an alternative use consistent with the campus conditional use permit, as approved or proposed at the time of the application. There was a lot of conversation around this. Ultimately, there was concern from Commissioners around an indefinite, an indefinite ability for this to remain as a parking lot. And I think a lot of the conversation dealt with it not being the highest and best use for this space. District Council 14 recommended approval of the application. Two people spoke in favor of the application, including a business owner currently in a contract with the University of St. Thomas to use the parking spaces in the lot, and no one spoke in opposition during the public hearing. There were no letters of support and one letter in opposition of the application. The zoning committee voted 7-1 in favor of the site plan extension until March 2036 with the two conditions.
Thank you, Commissioner Baker. Is there any questions with regards to the motion coming out of committee? Commissioner Reisberg?
Yes, thank you, Chair. Just curious, for the one vote in opposition, I would like to learn a little bit more about the reasoning for that.
Sure, and I believe that was me, Commissioner Reisberg. I felt that the original intention of the 2004 site plan with the condition of 10 years was that this property either had to go back to being open space or be developed in some way. It was continued one time, as Commissioner Baker noted, and then it was continued again. And now, either it's been continued twice, or either way, that now it's a 15-year continuance. I think that kind of goes against the original intent and purpose of the site plan approval that was made back in 2004 by those Commissioners that were sitting and were voting on it at that time. And really, you know, not to sound cliche, but it really just sounds like we're kicking the can. To me, it sounded like we were kicking the can down the road. I thought, actually, I didn't have a concern with it until I heard another Commissioner, and I believe, another Commissioner, I believe it was Commissioner Hood, talk about the importance of activating these type of corners that are heavily trafficked and have a lot of businesses around them. You have the Devani's business across the street, you have, I think, a service station and a gas station, or hopefully, another gas station that's been shut for a while, but I'm not sure if it's open again. And so it just seems like a parking lot is not the most efficient use for this space.
Just also highlight, and just following up with what the Chair said, and giving you also some perspective in the conversation. It is true that a former Planning Commission did not believe that a parking lot, or at least from my understanding, was the best and highest use of the space at the time. I do want to highlight that in the information that we received from staff, that we received a lot of information on the development in this area, of the McNeely Hall, more dormitory space, rooms for students to attend University of St. Thomas. And I also think that, just hearing one of the business owners saying, you know, current use of the space, that as of right now, that the space is actually getting a lot of use and I feel like is meeting a need in that area. I actually was in agreement with my colleagues after really hearing their perspective on not moving forward with an indefinite use of this space as a parking lot. But I do think that given the development from the initial, when this initial application came forward, and the Planning Commission, Planning Commission made its kind of rendering, now we're in a situation where I feel like the site is being used and it's needed in its current use. Moving forward, that may change, and I feel like the timeframe that the Commission voted on allows there to be an opportunity to come back. I would defer to the Chair, kind of in his thought around kicking the can. I could see how some feel that way. But I do think that it allows that area to have a need met. And so that would just be my comments on this one.
Thank you, Commissioner Baker. Is there any additional comments on this issue or questions? Seeing, I'm signing, oh, is that Commissioner Moore?
Yes, good morning. Thank you, Chair, and thank you, Mr. Baker. Question around, if the parking lot wasn't currently being utilized, where would that overflow go? Was there any information on that? Thank you.
Commissioner Baker?
Through the Chair. I think we have staff here, but Commissioner Moore, good question. There was some conversation again on best, best use, but before, I guess I speak out on that, I deferred to staff, Mr. Williams, it seems like is with us, Chair.
Mr. Williams?
Yes, thank you, Chair, and I apologize. I'm having some internet connectivity issues this morning, so I'm going to stay off of video to ensure the best possible connection. I took the question from Commissioner Moore to be, you know, where would the parking that's in that lot currently go if the lot weren't there? So there's multiple users of the lot. Some university affiliated folks, students and staff do use the lot. Half of it is available for use by Devani's Pizza, which is longtime neighborhood establishment located just across Grand Avenue, and that is under contract with the university. I would also note that it is occasionally used for civic functions, including during times of voting, St. Thomas hosts a polling station in McNeely Hall. So multiple users, I think, in, I can't really speak on behalf of Devani's, but my guess would be that they do not have a replacement. There's limited on-street parking in their own lot, it's quite small, and they, representatives of Devani's have stated many times that they need the parking. I do not believe that St. Thomas needs it at this time to meet their campus parking requirements, meaning, you know, that the required minimum amount of parking that they have to provide, but it is useful parking, as you can imagine with campuses. You know, where you park is sometimes important within a larger campus.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. Any additional comments or questions? All right, Tina, Simon, can we get a roll call?
Commissioner Baker?
Yes.
Commissioner Joy? Commissioner Grill?
Yes.
Commissioner Hood?
Yes.
Commissioner Said? Commissioner Perryman? Commissioner Presley?
Yes.
Commissioner Berg? Commissioner Riley?
Yes.
Commissioner Taggeoff?
Yes.
Commissioner Yang?
Yes.
Commissioner Holst?
Yes.
Commissioner Cantner? Commissioner Cho? Commissioner Moore? Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Unanimous.
Okay, so that motion for an amendment to the parking lot condition at the Grand Cleveland Parking Lot is approved. The next item, Commissioner Baker?
Thanks, Chair. The next item for new business was 1219 St. Clair. It's a rezoning from B1 Local Business to T3 Traditional Neighborhood. So this site had been used as an electrical substation since 1937, and the building was demolished in the winter of 2018, 2019. The applicant is under contract to purchase the subject parcel and is requesting a rezoning in order to construct a mixed-use residential and commercial building. The District Council did not provide a recommendation at the time of the committee meeting. Two people spoke in support of the application, and no one spoke in opposition during the public hearing. There was one letter of support and no letters in opposition for this application. Based on the findings, staff recommended approval of the rezoning from B1 Local Business to T3 Traditional Neighborhood, and the zoning committee voted 8-0 to approve the rezoning. Chair, I see Mr. Richardson, who was staff, reporting on this.
Mr. Richardson?
Thank you, Chair. I just wanted to add that the District Council, while they had not written by the time of the staff report or to meet the deadline, the Executive Director did give testimony at the, at the meeting and read the Housing and Land Use Committee's resolution to recommend approval of the rezoning.
Thank you, Mr. Richardson. Any questions, Commissioner Cantner?
Yeah, this might be out of scope, but I was just wondering, maybe this is a question for Mr. Richardson, whether there's any sort of plan to do a larger rezoning study for St. Clair Avenue? It just seems like we're moving kind of away from business zoning in general towards more traditional neighborhoods, so wondering if a bigger plan is in place.
Mr. Richardson?
Through the Chair, Commissioner Cantner, there, as far as I know, there is not a plan to look at zoning in the St. Clair corridor. If Director Pereda would have different information, that'd be great, but at this time, there's not.
Director Pereda, is there anything you'd like to add to that?
Chair and Commissioner Cantner, I am not aware of anything that would call for that. The only thing I could think of, and Mr. Richardson would be a better judge of this than I am, if there's anything called for, calling for that in the, in the district plan, off the top of my head, I don't, I don't know the details of that, but not generally that I'm aware of.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments or questions with regards to the rezoning at 1219 St. Clair? Mr. Richardson?
Thank you, Chair. Sorry, just one more thing, based on what the Director had just said, I, there is a, there's a policy in the District 14 Plan that I cannot remember the exact language of, but it talks about supporting rezoning in the St. Clair corridor, but I believe that could be interpreted on either site-by-site basis or potentially broader than that. But I just wanted to acknowledge that that is in the plan in some form.
Thank you, Mr. Richardson. Seeing no additional comments or hands raised, Simon, can we get a roll call?
Commissioner Reisberg? Commissioner Perryman?
Yes.
Commissioner Grill? Commissioner Riley? Commissioner Hood?
Yes.
Commissioner DeJoy?
Aye.
Commissioner Presley?
Yes.
Commissioner Baker?
Yes.
Commissioner Taggeoff?
Yes.
Commissioner Yang?
Yes.
Commissioner Said? Commissioner Thomas? Commissioner Moore?
Yes.
Commissioner Cantner?
Yes.
Commissioner Holst?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Unanimous.
The motion for 1219 St. Clair rezoning from B1 Local Business to T3 Traditional Neighborhood is approved. Next item, Commissioner Baker?
Thanks, Chair. Next item is 1001 Rainy Avenue. This was a rezoning from RT1 to Family Residential to RM1 Low Density, Multi-Family Residential. So the home on the site was constructed in 1905 and for many years was a duplex. In 2006, an illegal third residential unit was noted and ordered to be removed and reverted back to a duplex. So move forward to 2017, the site was again noted to have an illegal third residential unit via a zoning verification letter that preceded the most recent property sale. So staff found that one guideline wasn't met from the Planning Commission's triplex conversion guidelines, which I think was created back in 2009. In the guidelines, it states that the lot size must be at least 9,000 square feet, and for this actual lot size, the site, for the site, it was 6,351 square feet. There was much discussion among the committee members at the meeting and with staff about the concern of staff's recommended denial of the application. Much of the discussion was based on the outdated guidelines. It was noted that based on the guidelines, staff had to recommend denial, but understood the concern from committee members. The District Council did not make a recommendation by the time of the committee meeting. There was no one who spoke in favor or opposition of the application during the public hearing. There were no letters of support or opposition for this application. So based on staff's recommendation to deny the application based on it not having or meeting the lot size requirement, the committee voted in favor, so against staff's recommendation. So it voted in favor of the rezoning and stated for its rationale that having a lot size of less than 9,000 square feet would not negatively impact the surrounding areas, and this rezoning would encourage affordable housing.
Any questions or comments?
Yeah, I'm wondering what in the plan will promote the affordable housing piece?
I believe it's Commissioner Thomas.
Okay, through the Chair. The motion was made by Commissioner Grill, and I think, and it was agreed to by all. I think that the overall rationale was that having this additional, having this additional unit and it not just only being a duplex, but a triplex, allows there in this neighborhood to be just one more unit of affordable housing, but I will defer to Mr. Dermody and/or Commissioner Grill if you wanted to provide any more rationale on that.
So I see Commissioner Grill, and then I will call Commissioner Hood, who I believe also has some comments. Commissioner Grill, there's something you'd like to have?
This is Commissioner Grill. I think Chair Baker did a good job of summarizing it. I think the addition of a unit in a property that, while not, maybe not be traditional affordable housing, but is on the more affordable end of the scale, is a benefit for the community.
And through the Chair, I'd just like to highlight that I feel like we are really dealing more with the technicality on this, that the guidelines are out, this is my personal opinion, the guidelines are outdated. There's already been conversation and talk of either changing or removing those guidelines, it just hasn't happened yet. And so I personally don't think that it's necessarily fair to this applicant to hold a very strict interpretation, to me, with outdated guidelines that have already been discussed about necessarily being changed, when I don't see that this would be an undue burden. I see that this would be an undue burden, and I don't feel like it will hurt the surrounding
Commissioner Hood and Commissioner Moore?
Thank you, Chair. I had a question for staff. There was a discussion topic brought up that the guidelines that we have may or may not be applicable because they reference an outdated part of the code. I was wondering if staff had an opportunity to follow up on that, to see if those guidelines, which I think we, many of us agree that they, personal opinion, are outdated, but whether or not they're legally applicable. So the question to staff is, was any research done on that, and do we have any info on that? Thank you.
Would someone from staff be able to answer that for Commissioner Hood?
I would, Chair.
Go ahead, Mr. Sherman.
Bill Dermody, staff. The guidelines that were passed in 2009 are still applicable. They do reflect, in part, what was code at the time and has since changed, but those guidelines are still in effect until you formally rescind them. A question arose during the meeting, whether we have plans to do that, or whether Planning Commission needs to take action. Planning Commission needs to take action to, to formally rescind those or change those. And the answer is, yes, we do have something in the works, and it's on your agenda later today. We, we intend to look at that wrapped up into, wrapped up in the 1-4 units zoning studies. So you'll hear from Ms. Sigworth later on that. But they're in effect until, until you do something about it.
Thank you for answering. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Dermody, Mr. Hood. Commissioner Moore?
Thank you, Chair, and please forgive me, Mr. Commissioner Baker for calling you Mr. Baker earlier, Commissioner Baker. Thank you. I had a question around the original intent of the 9,000 square foot. Do we have any insights as to what the benefits of that additional square footage would do for the community and its residents? Or what, what, what was the original intent? Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Moore. Through the Chair, I defer to Mr. Dermody.
Mr. Dermody?
Thank you. Good question. I, I was talking with Alan Torsonson about this yesterday or the day before as well. The, we have, both in the current comp plan and the previous comp plan, you know, many of our policies are pretty general, and we have directive for, for, for rezonings to consider conformance with the comp plan. We also have directive for considering neighborhood compatibility. And both of these are, are fairly general. So at, you know, about 12 years ago, the Planning Commission decided that they wanted some more specificity for that, that, you know, some rails to help them consider projects. And that's why these, why these guidelines were created to, you know, help with those pretty vague questions. At the time, the concerns around lot size were related to, you know, too much density or too much activity. Parking shortages on the street were, were a significant concern. Policy has changed since then. You know, back at that time, some of the neighborhood plans that had been passed through Planning Commission and adopted by the City Council called for looking at downzoning, entire neighborhoods that were zoned to allow duplexes. And duplexes and triplexes were not seen for, for the positives that we, current policy would focus on, such as increasing density and affordability, but they were looked at as potential negatives, problem properties, or or parking issues. And so that, you know, tho- those were the sorts of things that we think were on the minds of the Planning Commission from 12 years ago when these were created, including that 9,000 square foot minimum.
Thank you, Mr. Dermody. Any additional questions or comments? So the motion coming out of committee is to approve the rezoning. Sonja, can we get a roll call?
Commissioner DeJoy?
Aye.
Commissioner Hood?
Aye.
Commissioner Grill?
Yes.
Commissioner Baker?
Yes.
Commissioner Presley?
Yes.
Commissioner Riley?
Yes.
Commissioner Taggio?
Yes.
Commissioner Ying?
Yes.
Commissioner Said?
Yes.
Commissioner Perryman?
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Moore?
No.
Commissioner Mitchell?
No.
Commissioner Holst?
Yes.
Commissioner Cantner?
Yes.
13-2.
So that motion for rezoning at 1001 Rainy is approved. Next item, Commissioner Baker.
Excuse me, Mr. Chair, this is Commissioner Risberg. I voted yes. I don't know if my name was called or not, I may have missed it.
No, I'm sorry. Yes, I'm sorry.
Oh, no problem.
So does it become 14-2?
Yes, 14-2.
So that item is still approved? Thank you, Commissioner Risberg, for pointing that out. Next item, Commissioner Baker.
Thanks, Chair. This one is pretty straightforward. 554 Broadway Street, this was a rezoning from I1 Light, Light Industrial to B5 Central Business Service District. The property owner intends to pursue a multifamily residential development. Staff found that all of the findings were met. There was no one to speak in favor or opposition of this application during the public hearing. There were also no letters of support or opposition of the application. I may need to call on staff around, because I think I missed where the District Council fell on this, or if they even submitted a recommendation for approval or not, or anything. But ultimately, the committee voted 7-0 to approve this rezoning.
Mr. Dermody?
There was no District Council recommendation on this.
Okay, is there any additional questions or comments with the, for the motion at 554 Broadway to rezone from I1 Light Industrial to B5 Central Business? Seeing that, Sonja, can we get a roll call?
Okay, Commissioner Risberg?
Yes.
Commissioner Perryman?
Yes.
Commissioner Grill?
Yes.
Commissioner Riley?
Yes.
Commissioner Hood?
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Presley?
Yes.
Commissioner Baker?
Yes.
Commissioner DeJoy?
Aye.
Commissioner Yang?
Yes.
Commissioner Taggio?
Yes.
Commissioner Moore?
Yes.
Commissioner Said?
Yes.
Commissioner Holst?
Yes.
Commissioner Cantner?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Unanimous.
So the rezoning at 554 Broadway is approved? Next item, Commissioner Baker.
Thanks, Chair. This is our last item, 603 Edmund Avenue. This was the reestablishment of non-conforming use as a duplex. The property was originally built as a single-family dwelling in 1895. In 1922, when the first rezoning code was enacted, the property, subject property was zoned B residential. So moving forward, in 2019, the property was put on the vacant building list, and the property subsequently lost its legal non-conforming status because it had been vacant for more than a year. Staff found that all of the findings were met. There was no one, excuse me, there was one person who spoke in support of this application, and no one who spoke in opposition during the public hearing. There was no letter of support or opposition of the application. Zoning Committee voted in favor of the reestablishment of the non-conforming use as a duplex with one condition, that the property shall adhere to all applicable code requirements and obtain a certificate of occupants, occupancy, or certificate of code compliance.
Thank you, Commissioner Baker. Any questions or comments regarding this motion? Seeing that, Sonja, can we get a roll call?
Okay, Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Moore?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Cantner?
Yes.
Mr. Holst?
Yes.
Mr. Yang?
Yes.
Commissioner Taggio?
Yes.
Commissioner Riley?
Yeah, yes, sorry.
Commissioner Risberg?
Yes.
Commissioner Presley?
Yes.
Commissioner Perryman?
Yes.
Commissioner Said?
Yes.
Commissioner Hood?
Yes.
Commissioner Grill?
Yes.
Commissioner DeJoy?
Aye.
Commissioner Baker?
Yes.
Unanimous.
The motion for 603 Edmund, non-conforming duplex is approved. I believe that's all of them, right, Commissioner Baker?
That's correct, that's it.
Thank you. Moving on to the next item on the agenda is the comp plan. Neighborhood Planning Committee, Commissioner Grill?
This is Commissioner Grill. So we have had Ms. Sigworth into comp and neighborhood planning, and she was previously presenting on the 1-4 unit infill study. And I believe she is here today with a presentation.
Ms. Sigworth?
Thanks. Good morning. Good morning, Commissioners. I will share my presentation here. All right, and so this is a, a big study, a competitive study, so I also have my team members here, Michael Wade, Josh Williams, and well, Director Praira. All right. So as part of the scoping phase of this study, we sought the CNPC's input at the September 2 CNPC meeting on some key policy issues in the 1-4 unit infill housing realm, and posed questions on housing sizes and stock, homeownership, financial equity, affordability, housing markets, building types. And these are some of the topics that came about as a result of those questions. Committee members' personal experiences with the city's housing options, current affordability of 2-4 unit dwellings, occupancy patterns, importance of providing access to homeownership resources, the idea that homeownership is not the only path to wealth building, the potential for increased competition among non-local and local landlords, housing affordability gaps that exist, financial and market viability in developing 1-4 unit housing, as well as an initial suggestion was to focus the study mostly on citywide amendments rather than targeted areas. All right, I wanted to share a little bit about the current housing shortage context that St. Paul is facing. There are low rental vacancy rates, high percentages of households that reflect, that are a cost burden, meaning that they are paying more than 30% or 50% of their income on rent. The city zoning code has reflected a decision to, to keep exclusive single-family zones intact. And this is evident in the, the fact that 72% of residential-y zone land is zoned exclusively for detached single-family homes. The number of housing units that are located in duplexes, triplexes, and fourplexes are decreasing. Metropolitan Council is projecting an increase of almost 13,000 households by 2040. And 50% of the housing units are located in single-family homes, and 31% of housing units are located in larger multifamily with 10 or more units. And there are fewer options that are one unit detached and two- to four unit, unit housing. All right, some background on the study. In 2018, City Council passed Resolution 181204. It's called for action to create and preserve affordable housing, and specifically called out a zoning study to explore ways to allow more multi-unit buildings along transit routes and a neighborhood known in single-family zoning districts. And our 2040 Comprehensive Plan has a lot of policies that call for transit supportive density, expanding housing choices, and small-scale multifamily, including duplexes, triplexes, townhomes, and single-family homes that are smaller. All right, in previous years, and even more, especially more recently, interest has grown in physically smaller homes and accessory dwelling units, or ADUs. Residents and developers have been voicing a desire for lower zoning barriers to these neighborhood-scale dwelling types that are more affordable to be, to, to build, and can be taken on by property owners with, with a little extra space in their yard, or or in their home. So this clustering, these clusterings of small detached homes, or the addition of an ADU to a single-family home can add housing at a slightly higher density than a single-family home. And PED and HRA have identified substandard lots, which are lots that are smaller than the minimum required for building the zoning code, as potential for housing. For example, in R4, the minimum lot size per unit is 5,000 square feet. So lots that are zoned, lots that are smaller than that, zoned R4, they would require variances. And as a result, many of these said vacant. All right, so based on that context and background, we have come up with the 1-4 unit infill housing zoning study. So the purpose, carry out the actions called for in City Council Resolution 181204. Implement policies from the 2040 Comprehensive Plan. Accommodate community growth and the diverse needs of residents, support increased housing density and broadening, broadened housing choices, address the city's housing shortage. And due to the urgency of the housing crisis, we are proposing to break the study up into two different phases. So Phase 1 is on a relatively fast timeline, and we'll review the potential for reducing zoning restrictions to permit more dwelling units to be built on lots citywide. Specifically, staff proposes to evaluate amendments to allow physically smaller homes, ADUs on smaller lots with no owner occupancy required, and allow more than one residential building per lot. And Phase 2 is a longer, more intensive phase that reviews one-family, two-family, and our, and townhouse zoning districts, which is RL through RT2, to assess potential for a greater range of housing options. Specifically, staff proposes to evaluate amendments to allow a greater diversity of single-family developments, allow duplexes and triplexes in more places, allow fourplexes in some places, and change dimensional standards and other requirements to facilitate a greater range of housing options. All right, so here's a more detailed scope of Phase 1. This has a focus on small homes, ADUs, and the potential for more than one building per lot. So in this phase, we are evaluating easing the requirements on the arrangement of doors and windows on facade. These existing requirements are 15% of the total area of the principal facade. Reducing the minimum lot area for ADUs, eliminating owner occupancy requirements for ADUs, amendments to the maximum floor area of accessory units, addressing dimensional standards for one-family dwellings in RT1 through RM2, addressing, or sorry, reducing a minimum distance between principal facades. Currently, it's 12 feet. Reducing minimum building width. Currently, this is 22 feet for minimum. Amendments to the number of prints, of multiple principal buildings per lot. And like Bill had mentioned earlier, we are also looking at updates to or removal of the duplex, triplex conversion guidelines that were adopted in 2009. All right, so here's a more detailed scope of, of the district tax amendments for Phase 2. This has a focus on 2- to 4plexes and increasing diversity of single-family homes. So in this phase, we are evaluating district tax amendments, including amendments to RL through R4, single-family districts to permit duplexes and triplexes by right. Amendments to RT1, the two-family district to permit triplexes and fourplexes by right. Consolidation or reorganization of RL through RT2 districts. Changing minimum lot sizes or lot widths in order to permit 2- to 4plexes. The potential to reduce minimum lot size standards, or eliminating these standards, and then pairing the introduction of FAR standards are something we are considering. The consideration of maximum lot sizes. Uh, the consideration of maximum lot sizes or other zoning standards to regulate the degree of redevelopment and protect against displacement, reduction of setback requirements, um affordable housing incentives for RL through RT two, and increasing that maximum lot coverage. Right, this is Phase Two Scope Continued. Uh, we are also looking at amendments to the cluster development requirements. They are currently um conditionally permitted um in RL through RT two. And they require a certain lot width and um you know, an improved street amendments to um ADU standards uh requirements and also continually evaluating um our Phase One text amendments that we make earlier. Um, and so while these are district tax amendments that would occur citywide, you're also looking into narrowing the geography of impact to neighborhoods. Neighborhood notes and or transit quarters, depending on what might come about in our in our uh analysis and other market dynamics. This is what is out of scope. Uh amendments to our RM one through our M three, which is recently updated um in T districts, affordable housing requirements, though affordable housing incentives may be considered, and parking regulations, which, as you know, um recently been updated or are in the process of being updated as part of the parking study, which is also changing parking requirements for one to four unit housing. All right, I also want to talk a bit about our plan for engagement. Uh, for resident engagement, we have anticipated attending community events. Hopefully, these will be opening up again this summer and starting back up. Um, so potentially safe summer nights from farmers markets and other events and setting up boards and activities to get input from residents. We're also planning um virtual listening sessions with open ended questions to kind of gain an understanding of what um neighborhood small scale development needs to residents, what types of housing might be missing in their neighborhoods. Um, and along with an online survey and a project website. We're also planning a specific outreach to stakeholders, including cultural community organizations, advocacy groups, and business groups. And um for our technical expert engagement, we're planning um focus groups and interviews with nonprofit community developers, private sector developers, builders, architects, financial professionals, and real estate professionals, as well as um DSI's, one to two unit planner reviewers, and PED um housing team members. We're also considering a a technical advisory committee made up of some of these members of the groups uh to meet throughout the process and advise on the technical aspects of this study. Great, here is our initial timeline for Phase One and Phase Two. Uh, subject subject to change. So for Phase One, um research and interviews have been occurring since last fall. We've now moved into amendment drafting and then anticipate planning commission and public hearing um later in the spring, followed by uh City Council approval uh possibly this this summer, at least. For Phase Two, um scoping research and um analysis have been occurring since last fall. We anticipate starting technical expert interviews very soon and resident engagement this summer. Wrapping up in the fall, followed by amendment drafting and review this fall and winter in the planning commission process next spring and then uh City Council approval in spring, summer, twenty twenty-two. So with that, um me and my team members are open for questions you may have.
Ms. Segworth, any questions for staff? Uh, Commissioner Hood and then Commissioner Mitchell.
Uh, thank you, Chair. Uh, yeah, thank you for the presentation. I had a question, um why was it decided to break the study up into two phases as opposed to just consolidate in one phase? Thank you.
Yeah, um thanks, Commissioner Chair. Um, that's a good question. Um, so we we decided to break it up into two different parts. Because we were hearing a lot about the um the small homes and the ADU ordinances. And um these changes are um, they don't require as much research and engagement as as some of the bigger um more intensive parts of the scope for Phase Two. Um, so we we thought that we could get this done a little sooner um as it there's um there's interest in this and um and just it requires requires less time. Um, does anybody else want to add to that from my team?
I might jump in, Chair, if it's okay uh to add on. Uh, Phase One, in my mind, is really uh there there are policy questions in there, but they're less dramatic. You know, our ADU ordinance in St. Paul, while it's uh it's okay, it's been described, maybe there's pieces of it that could be described as a poison pill. Uh, it's sort of a dramatic language, but uh this idea that uh you need to have owner occupancy in either the ADU or the principal unit. Um, while I think there's maybe good intentions there and and can help with accountability. Um, folks have have criticized that as, you know, that's something that hits that feasibility. It reduces um maybe the ability or the the willingness of a property owner to invest in an ADU. Uh, because, you know, unless they're planning on living there long term, um, you know, it it just reduces your flexibility and so um, so that's one that's more of a policy question. Um, but we we've definitely gotten comments that, you know, that that might be something we should reconsider, including uh we know at least one council member is interested in exploring that. Um, uh, other kind of po- sort of their policy questions, but again, smaller and more technical are, you know, we have this requirement in the code. Every home has to be twenty-two feet uh wide, the building. Um, and we know that that's that there are homes out there that are built that are uh not as not as wide as twenty-two feet. And so uh is that arbitrary? Do we need to consider smaller homes? Uh, and a third example I like to throw in is um single family zoning. So let's say you have uh an R uh R four zoned lot, five thousand square feet, minimum lot size. Uh, that's the minimum in an R four, uh but you happen to own a lot that's ten thousand square feet. Um, so because that's double the minimum lot size, you know, logic would show would say that you could build two single family homes on that, and that's not currently allowed. Uh, so there there's things like that that are sort of lower hanging fruit that we think, you know, going through doing a Phase One. Yes, there's policy questions, uh but we think these are easier. Um, and not that there wouldn't be input, of course, there's input, uh but uh it's it's not the same thing as saying, let's open up, you know, the single family districts to two and three units, uh four units in some cases. Um, we we understand that's gonna that's gonna be a bigger sort of policy question and want to ensure that there's both both resident and technical uh engagement on those on those policy questions.
Excellent. Thank you both for the very detailed response and uh it's uh, I mean, my opinion is that sounds like a smart way to go about it. So thank you very much.
So I see you, Commissioner, uh Mr. Wade had raised his hand. I'll I'll call on him and then I also uh wanted to add something to what Commissioner, uh Director Pareda said, but Mr. Wade.
Hello, good morning Commissioners. This is Michael Wade, staff. Um, everything that uh my colleagues have said is right on, I think, just a little bit about the history of the Phase One amendments. It was sort of a parallel smattering of items that had come from different directions, interest from board offices, uh historical interest from staff, just noticing um provisions here and there that could use more attention or um, you know, the people had sort of consolidated the sentiment around and we're really just waiting for an appropriate study to usher it through on. So um, there were, you know, there's also an ADU study uh that we had considered for maybe twenty twenty-two. Um, small lots and small homes uh was an issue that was floating in the ether as the one to four unit infill housing zoning study came up and became official. And so um, s- staff didn't kind of sit down, look at the scope of the one to four unit study and say, we should carve out these pieces. Uh, they were sort of already on our minds and we thought this is a great opportunity to take care of some of the low hanging fruit, like Director Pareda had said. And um these these pieces aren't going to, they're not going to be concrete and not considered in Phase Two. So to say that without all of the negatives, making an amendment in Phase One doesn't mean that we are ignoring it in Phase Two or that it's uh being considered out of context of everything else that we address in Phase Two. Um, so there there may even be a Second Amendment if it makes more sense once the Phase Two study has uh been completed. Thank you.
Uh, so before calling on Commissioner Mitchell and Commissioner Holst and then Commissioner DeJoy uh to to Commissioner Hood's uh question and then Director Pareda's comment. The 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 those have been that have been in the planning commission probably since twenty seventeen or twenty eighteen, when the uh ADU study was done. Um, on understand that the ADU study sort of focused on the idea of multi-generational families um and sort of the changing demographics of what a quote unquote family is, as we we've dealt with that, the definition of a family in a household. And I I do agree with Director Pareda that that the AD- that there is a lot of poison pills in the ADU ability to build those in the city. Um, I think, uh, Mr. Wade, I think you said that there's only been like twenty-some built since twenty eighteen. Is that correct?
Chair, there actually fewer than that, and that number is actually just ones that have entered the permitting process at any stage. So I believe it's more like sixteen or seventeen. And of those, uh without having the data right in front of me, I think it's about four or five that have been completed at any stage.
Yeah, so I mean, I I think that speaks for itself in terms of how easy they are to build and all the requirements that that the city initially imposed on being able to build these. I will say, uh, I raised this concern during uh the the committee, and I'll raise it again. I I I'm a bit dubious about this idea of removing the owner occupancy requirement as a of a way of building more of these. And I also think it's um I I think that that's a different community engagement process than what the original ADU process went out there with to individuals uh and to communities about what this study was gonna do. Um, especially if we're gonna say that developers or individuals can come in and buy properties and then subsequently develop, I mean, uh, you know, rent out a house and then put an ADU and rent that out as well. Um, so I think that's a bit concerning and it just deserves further exploration, but I look forward to hearing the results of the report and the work that staff will be doing on this and the recommendation. Uh, Commissioner Mitchell and then Commissioner Holst and then Commissioner DeJoy.
Thank you, Chair, and uh thank you um for the presentation. I really liked the presentation. And I am kind of piggybacking on what you guard to demographics, because we know that um because when I think about housing, I think about it's a building, but who's going into those houses, into those homes? And so we know the demographics are changing for Europeans, uh decreasing in the number of people having children. But for uh for communities of color, that is not um decreasing. So there are certain populations in communities of color where these homes, uh they may not uh be able to occupy because of the regulations of how many people can be in living in that home. So maybe some of the research should be around some of this demographic so that we as a community can understand who would who this housing is for and meet community needs. So that's my comment.
Thank you, Commissioner Mitchell. Uh, Ms. Segworth, is there anything you'd like to respond to that?
Um, thank you, Chair. Commissioner Mitchell, uh that is a great point, and uh we were just talking about recently um the the concept of, you know, are we building units or are we building um building for, not saying this right, uh building for units or building for people. So, you know, uh the number of uh units could be multiple, but they are small, you know, one bedroom or two bedroom, but they can't really hold uh hold the amount of people that would be in a larger family. Um, so that is definitely something to consider, the idea of of larger units um and studying demographics will definitely definitely help with that. So thank you for bringing that up.
Commissioner Holst.
Uh, thank you. Um, some of my questions were answered around ADUs uh regarding how many have actually been built and and zoning, which seems like a really low number. I know it was mentioned uh uh one of the uh potentially poison pills around the ADUs is um the owner occupancy requirement. I can see how that could uh affect that only an individual's long-term plan, but uh really puts limitations on on sale of the property later. But are what are some of the other uh poison pills, so to speak, tied around ADUs um that have resulted in in so few actually being built in the city?
Mr. Wade, uh or Director Pareda, would you have the answer to that?
Chair, uh this is Mr. Wade. Um, thank you, Commissioner, for the question. Uh, to my knowledge, in this conversation of true poison pills, the owner occupancy is the main one that's been focused on. Another policy or rather um ordinance that serves as a barrier that's outside of zoning are, for instance, plumbing code requirements. Um, it's it's a part of the state plumbing code that uh every dwelling on a property has its own independent hookup for sewer and water to the main line. Um, St. Paul and Minneapolis each have building officials who interpret that based on given situations. Uh, topography, you know, uh other barriers that may come up. Um, the Minneapolis building official has determined that their main line is too fragile to um really be able to bear lots of new hookups from new ADUs and has uh deemed it okay to plug into um the existing sewer and water from the existing single family home. And in that way, they're able to avoid some of the fees that come along with that, whereas our building official has determined that our main line is in better condition and that there's nothing keeping us from uh requiring what the state building, the state plumbing code requires. So that's a long way of saying that it's expensive to plug into the main line for sewer and water, and that is, that could be considered a poison pill, but again, that's outside of the zoning code study and it's a part of the state code and would require kind of a bigger uh push for that. Um, but I would turn it over to Director Pera.
Chair and Commissioner, Commissioner Holst. That was the big one, I think, what Michael mentioned, uh the sewer connection, which is not a zoning issue. Uh, we won't be looking at that specifically for um for ADU ordinance updates. Uh, but um a couple others, the the minimum lot size has been talked about, um five thousand square feet. Um, uh and then um, you know, the more we we've talked about this at the staff level, I think just thinking about how does lot coverage play into what you can do with an ADU. So, you know, there's thirty-five percent maximum in most places. Um, and then there's a rear yard maximum. Um, there's just a lot of zoning pieces that layer on to your ability to do an ADU. And and maybe we just need to think through all of those. Uh, what are they? And can we just make it easy, just make it a little bit easier? When, you know, when the uh, the whole idea is accessory, right? It's a it's a it's a secondary uh smaller unit to a a more principal, a larger unit, single family or single family right now um is what is allowed um as your principal um structure. Um, so um so there's the variety of different things, I think, that that we're gonna we're gonna look at um in the broader study at Phase Two. It goes a bit beyond the ADU ordinance, I would say. Not a very concise answer, sorry, but it's a good question.
No, thank you. I I find that helpful and uh, yeah, I can see a separate, so you know, imagining that most ADUs may be in the sort of the backyard area uh running a sewer line all the way through the property and a water line all the way through the property as opposed to hooking up to the residents that are there. Um, uh, would be really, really add a lot of cost to a particular project. I also recognize that that's, you know, again, state code. So, thank you. Uh, but but I do think it's interesting to point out, as you've mentioned uh carefully, that there is some uh, I guess apparently, I don't want to say room for interpretation, but but it's looked at differently by different people. So, thank you.
Commissioner DeJoy.
Um, I'm gonna reserve my question for further down the line. Mine
I'm gonna reserve my question for further down the line. Mine was more about when the study is completed, how and when can we apply these policies? Because sometimes we get hung up and say, well, that doesn't really apply to a site plan review or whatnot, but I'll, I'll wait until further down the line.
Commissioner Cantner?
Yeah, my comment is just more to Phase Two, you know, looking at the conversation we're having about these ADU amendments reminds me of kind of the process that Minneapolis has gone through when they've added triplexes to their single-family zoning code. And, and since they've done that over a year ago, there's only been three triplex permits pulled, I believe, or built. And so they've gone back and now are, are amending their code to look at, you know, the, the FAR and a couple other things. And I think, kind of to the ADU conversation, if, if we can, in this Phase Two, which it looks like you're doing, kind of figure out what those poison pills are ahead of time. So whatever we pass, we don't need to come back in a couple years and say, oh, hey, we, we wanted triplexes or duplexes, but they can't be built. I think if we could do it in one self loop, that would be great.
Any additional comments or questions?
Chair, this is Michael Wade, just with one, one additional thing, and really this is echoing what a couple of the commissioners have already said. And Director Prair, the ADUs are, are not the priority. How to say this? They're not the priority in the study in that the point originally of an accessory dwelling unit was to incrementally allow a little bit of density, a little bit of extra housing where it's not currently allowed. So for instance, in single-family districts, how can you have another home there that's not disruptive to the neighborhood fabric or some of these different concerns? And so that was the context that ADUs entered the scene in. Now that we're looking at where single-family homes, where duplexes, triplexes and fourplexes are allowed, even with a couple of amendments to lower barriers in the Phase One, the Phase Two will really serve as a sign for an existential question for ADUs in the code. You know, if we end up making bigger changes with residential zoning districts and that kind of thing, then there really will be a, a point of questioning what, what's the role of ADUs in this new context? And so that's, that's going to be part of our consideration. Thank you.
And, and so that, that raises a question for me. I'm looking at the, the initial timeline, Phase One, Phase Two. And it appears that the biggest difference between the Phase One and Phase Two is the resident engagement. Interviews and resident engagement on Phase Two that don't appear to be in Phase One. And I understand that in terms of the fact that the ADU study has recently been done. And so that, that, that whole process was already engaged on and community input was provided. But as Mr. Wade just noted, that was done with the idea of minimal interference with current, trying to include some density in areas that, like residential zoning properties. But I think when you start talking about taking away owner occupancy of that, that starts getting into a completely different conversation about how that could shape a particular neighborhood. And I'm wondering whether that requires its own engagement in and of itself. Director Pereda?
Yeah, Chair and Commissioners, that's a good point. We, just to point out too, for Phase One and Phase Two, we have ADUs mentioned in both phases. So, you know, ultimately, if relaxing or removing the owner occupancy requirement for ADUs in Phase One is, is, appears to be a big lift in terms of, you know, community interest in it or sort of commission interest in it, we, we can take more time and engage the community more on that question. We just know that there, there's been quite a bit of interest in, in developing ADUs. And owner occupancy has come up quite, quite a bit as, as a barrier that it, it shapes investment in an ADU to begin with. And, and so, given just the lack of units that we've seen, ADU units developed, what are, how do we think about that? And, and so certainly there, there, you know, there could be neighborhood impacts over time. If we need to take more time for that question, we certainly could and put it in Phase Two. So that, that way it's more of a policy question with more engagement. I don't think it, it, you know, would have to be in Phase One. But just given the, the, the nature of the housing crisis, the interest in additional small options for people, you know, and ADUs can serve that need, is it, is it lower hanging fruit, so to speak?
Commissioner Taggio?
I have one small question. We were talking about poison pills potentially in this process. One that I'm familiar with and I wanted to ask if it was on your radar is when you move from a sort of a duplex to a tri-unit, building like a triplex, and I'd imagine a duplex plus ADU, there are requirements around kind of egress and things like sprinkler systems and automatically closing doors and that kind of thing. Is that on your radar as a potential poison pill to look at?
Someone from staff, Ms. Sigworth?
Thanks, Chair. Commissioner Taggio? Yes, that is definitely on our, on our radar. I have spent some time emailing with Department of Safety Inspections, the one, their one-to-two unit review coordinator staff. And, yep, we are looking at what other things kind of kick in when, when you do a triplex or a fourplex in terms of, yeah, fire safety, egress, accessibility, that's another big one that can add cost and and other work that we, that would need to be done when another unit is added. So that is definitely on our radar. So, thank you for bringing that up.
Wonderful.
Mr. Williams?
Yes, thank you, Chair. I, I would just add that, you know, some of those are, are, are building code things that we may not be able to change. But certainly having an awareness of them is important. And how they, an awareness and then how they therefore impact the ability to produce more housing. Thank you.
Okay. Is there any additional comments or questions? Seeing, Commissioner Grill, turn to you for a motion.
So this is Commissioner Grill. The motion out of committee was to, oh gosh, where's the word now? To just a second, recommend that the Planning Commission initiate the one-to-four unit in full housing study.
I believe I need a second. Is there a second?
Commissioner DeJoy, second.
All right, so the motion from Commissioner Grill, seconded by Commissioner DeJoy. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing on, Tanya, can we get a roll call?
Okay, Commissioner Said?
Yes.
Commissioner Yang?
Yes.
Commissioner Rizberg?
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes, yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Moore?
Yes.
Commissioner Hood?
Yes.
Commissioner Perryman?
Yes.
Commissioner Grill?
Yes.
Commissioner Riley?
Yes.
Commissioner Joy?
Aye.
Commissioner Baker?
Yes.
Commissioner Holt?
Yes.
Commissioner Presley?
Yes.
Commissioner Cantner?
Yes.
Commissioner Taggio?
Yes.
Chair Rangel Morales?
Yes.
Unanimous.
So the motion to initiate the one-to-four infill housing zoning study is approved? Moving on to the next item on the agenda, Transportation Committee, Commissioner Rizberg.
Thank you, Chair. Our next meeting of the Transportation Committee will be this coming Monday, the fifth. Two items. First will be on issue of meaning norms and expectations. I think the outcome of this could be helpful for other committees, if not the full commission. And the Steering Committee will take this up later after the committee has a chance to talk about it. And then our second item is the, on Monday, is the Eastside Bike Parking Project. And Jimmy Shoemaker from Public Works will describe that project. So feel free to tune in. Thanks. Bye.
Thank you, Commissioner Rizberg. Okay, next item on the agenda is Communication and Nominations. This is Commissioner Underwood.
Chair, I believe Commissioner Underwood may not be here.
Oh, that's right. She was, she was gone today. Louis, is there anything from Communication and Nominations?
Not at the moment. We, just for awareness, we have begun talking again with our District Council Coordinator about some various community trainings related to planning and zoning. And also had a recent conversation with our zoning administrator, Yaya Diata DSI, about coordination on that same point. So we hope later in the year we can have an update on that front. And the Communications and Nominations Committee does get involved with, with those workshops.
Thank you. Task Force Liaison reports. I'll turn to Commissioner DeJoy and then to Mr. Dermody.
Yes, thank you, Chair. So there is still time to provide input on the Hillcrest Master Plan, the, the two finalist scenarios, as well as review and input on the draft housing policy. You have until April sixteenth. If you still want to take that survey, we encourage people to do that, and I put the link in the chat. Everyone's encouraged to take the online survey, and then our CAC meeting is scheduled for April twentieth at five-thirty. And that's my report.
Mr. Dermody?
Thank you, Chair Commissioners. Glad to be able to update you. It's been quite a while. On the Hillcrest Master Plan, I, I think this is really the first full update we've had since the Community Advisory Committee was launched some year and a half ago. And there's, you know, a lot of action that's going to be happening this year, including at Planning Commission. So very glad to give you an update so that we're not hitting you all at once in the September to November timeframe and let you know what's going on and take some of your questions today. So thanks very much for your time. Let's see here. So the point today, main point is to update you on, on what's going on with the master plan and also to prepare you for that upcoming role. These are the topics I'll, I'll be hitting today before we get to your questions, although feel free to jump in if you have questions about what I am talking about. So probably everyone is aware of this, but I'll start with the, with the basics, especially for our new commissioners. The Hillcrest Golf Course is a former golf course, one hundred and twelve acres at the northeast corner of the city, right at McKnight and Larpenter, on the border with Maplewood in both directions. There's a, an aerial photo of what we're talking about from just a couple of years ago. The area outlined in purple. A lot of people ask, what's that appendage going off to the west? It is the former driving range associated with the golf course and a little bit of open space. And then south of that, and not part of this project, is the St. Paul Water Reservoir, which is just a raised, flat, green area. That is not part of this master plan. Nice drone view from around the time the course closed from, looking from north to, to south. It gives you a sense of the trees and topography there. You don't find one hundred and twelve acres quite like this. We are sort of spoiled in St. Paul when it comes to opportunity. We had the Ford site, one hundred and thirty acres on the other end of town just a few years ago, and one hundred and twelve acres here. But this is, you know, the first big parcel of land where we have to make decisions about its future since the Phalan Corridor, which was mostly planned in the nineteen eighties and is still being implemented. A little more about the opportunity, and maybe this slide should be titled "The Opportunity/Challenge." On the left there, you can see the, the, the wetlands in blue. There are ten wetlands on the site. You can also get a sense for the topography. There are contour lines on there. The, the plus sign is the high point for the city of St. Paul and the high point for the site, obviously. And contributed to the, to the namesake, Hillcrest, and plenty of other topography on the site. And those, those green dots are just some of the significant trees on the site, some of the older, larger ones. So gives you a sense of how that's all clustered. On the right is a map of pollution, primarily mercury pollution. There's also some petroleum, you know, where the cars and vehicles were parked. And this is only what's known. There, there's been testing pretty thoroughly on the old fairways. So that's why you can see it's laid out like, like a golf course. That's where they've done a lot of testing. They've only done a little bit of testing in the rough. The hope is that there's less pollution in the roughs than there is where there was active golf. But, you know, that, that's to be determined. But the, the overall point here is it's, it's a brownfield site. It looks awfully green, but it's a brownfield site. Quite a bit of contamination that will need to be cleaned up along with this development. Site history, we think of it as golf course. Of course, for thousands of years, this was Dakota Territory, primarily Native American land. Agriculture for, you know, a few decades up until the golf course was developed and opened in nineteen twenty-one. On the right, and thank you to Catherine Sarnicky of, of the Port Authority for digging up this. This is an actual advertisement for the, for the mercury contaminating product, a fungicide that was used decades ago on the golf course and on a lot of golf courses throughout the country. And unfortunately, mercury is a poison. And that's all over the golf course now. The local Pipefitters, Steamfitters Union owned it for, for a while as an investment, and after closing the site, they sold it to the St. Paul Port Authority in two thousand and nineteen. Ordinance nineteen thirty-nine is important to be aware of. This is the ordinance that the City Council passed to allow the Port Authority to issue ten million dollars in bonds to finance their purchase of the site. They bought it for ten million dollars. That same ordinance sets some parameters and expectations that we are, you know, abiding by for the master planning effort. There's an expectation of a public benefit in the form of around a thousand jobs, around a thousand housing units. There's also the expectation that land sales will generally pay for development, for, for the basic infrastructure on the site. So no tax increment financing or other city subsidy for infrastructure with two exceptions. Advanced energy infrastructure like solar or geothermal or affordable housing funding, which is, you know, not, not infrastructure. So those, those are the two exceptions noted. So those, those are the two exceptions noted, but generally, this development is to pay for itself. Some folks have, have raised the question, why not more city contribution? Well, it's important to note that that $10 million contribution is funded by taxpayers, that bond purchase. And also, we are, we don't know quite what the numbers are going to be. That's going to be determined down the line. But the ordinance 1939 did set up these basic expectations. Also, there's an expectation of about 20 acres of parks and open space, including five acres of active park. So we land, launched the Master Plan process in August of 2019. The first Community Advisory Committee meeting was in October of that year. We hired consultants Cunningham, Cunningham Group is our lead consultant and a couple of sub consultants are helping with that. We have a Technical Advisory Committee, and the Port Authority joins us with that. Their staff of about 25 members. This does include, some people asked, does Maplewood know what's going on? Certainly, they've got staff who come to those meetings, Ramsey County as well, because they own the, the adjacent Larpenter and McKnight Roads. And, you know, also staff throughout the city. And we have a Community Advisory Committee. Andy Joy is the Planning Commission rep. There are three St. Paul residents, three Maplewood residents. But really, it's more than three St. Paul residents. I'll, I'll note that too. We have a liaison with the local District Council, who is a neighbor. We have a business rep who is also a neighbor. And DeJoy is a neighbor, so really, we have more than just those three St. Paul residents. And one of the Maplewood residents started out this process on the St. Paul side and moved. So, you know, they, the affiliation here changed, but the person did not. Timeline, this is one of the, the important pieces of information I wanted to convey to you today, kind of give you a sense, and, and we'll get you this, we'll post this online afterwards, the presentation, so you can look at this as a reference going forward. Kind of tells you where we've been. We, the star on the, on the lower bar there is where we are today. We're in our third round of engagement. And as Commissioner DeJoy noted, we are looking for input on the stpaul.gov/hillcrest website until April 16th. We have a survey up there, a video, some frequently asked questions and other information that we are encouraging any member of the public out there today listening, please go to that website and tell us what you think about two finalist scenarios that, that we've got out there. We're going to, after this engagement, work on creating the final Master Plan. That includes a scenario, but also some text that goes with it. And, you know, the, the Community Advisory Committee will comment on that and, and provide their official thoughts in August. And then the process with y'all will begin, I think September 1st, is what we have targeted for the competent neighborhood planning committee to review this and potentially put the, the Master Plan out for a public hearing. So it, it will come fast and furious in the second part of this year. And eventually to the City Council in January. As I mentioned, we're in our third round of engagement. Doing a bunch of pop-ups, that's what we're working on right now. We had, you know, an online meeting, we've got online surveys. I'm going to have a conversation circle with Councilmember Yang, the Councilmember for the, for Ward 6, this part of the city, and some selected people next week, I think. And then, you know, we've got these five or six pop-ups that we're going to do to try to talk to people out in the community. Maybe get some additional voices that we don't hear through the, through the big meetings that we hold. Also note the Eastside Freedom Library. We didn't sponsor or, or, or run these meetings, but they had a couple of conversations recently about the project as well, which was great for getting the word out and, and getting people talking about this and involved in this big project. I do not want to get into the details of the pros and cons of these two. That's, that's what we're talking to the broader community about. But I do want to at least show you that we have these two finalist scenarios, branded the Hilltop and Jobs Focus Scenario. We want to hear from people what they like and don't like about both of these, you know, what they're concerned about. We're also asking people if they have a strong preference for one or the other and, and why, so that we can use that information to help decide which one of these is the staff recommendation anyway, before we head through the Community Advisory Committee and the Planning Commission process. Just for your information, besides those two dimensional maps, we also have some three dimensional renderings from four or five different locations around the site for each of it. And this is an example of that, that we're, we're taking out to folks and showing them. I'll, I'll be out this, this afternoon, or this evening in the neighborhood myself, talking to folks about pictures like this and what it makes them think about these two finalist scenarios. So I, I mentioned that the Master Plan is more than just a map. It's, it will be that one recommended site scenario, but there will also be text chapters, including Housing Policy, which is the one that we have a draft out to the public right now about. If you care about housing policy, that is posted on the stpaul.gov/hillcrest website. You can view it and tell us what you think about it in our survey. We anticipate also having a sustainability policy. This, we are talking about shooting for net zero carbon. So the Port Authority is, is willing to aim high on this, and we will have some sort of policy within the plan. The, there will be, you know, information on transportation, which we've heard a lot about from the public, that's an issue of concern. Stormwater, zoning will be covered. We'll talk, of course, about the process. And we also want to make sure there's plenty of clarity on modifications. For those who have gone through other Master Plan processes, you know, this can be sometimes confusing. What, what does the Planning Administrator approve and what comes to the Planning Commission? And we want to add some clarity on that. There will be some, some amount of flexibility in, built into the document, but what comes to the Planning Commission later, we, we want to be clear. This draft schedule provides more detail to the, to the overview I, I showed earlier. But the, you know, the, the bottom line is August, September, we'll be talking to the Comprehensive Neighborhood Planning Committee. And in the second half of the year, we'll, we'll be with the Planning Commission a few times, talking about this project. Besides the Master Plan, it's important to remember that other things are going on. There will be an environmental review process, and we're still talking about the timing on that. Not sure about what the timing will be. That's called an AUAR, Alternative Urban Area Wide Review, I think is the, the acronym there. It's, it's a form of environmental review. A, a formal, state law required process that is, is another venue for people to give their opinions, at, at least on the environmental impacts side of this project. There are also wetlands laws, both the watershed district and the state have rules and regulations about the wetlands impacts. And so there will be a process for those. Plating, of course, this site will need to be subdivided, and there will be a site plan review. Of course, those who have been through Ford are, are, are aware of all this, you know, Highland Bridge, all of the same types of processes here at the Hillcrest site. And when will development happen is a, a common question. The St. Paul Port Authority will develop the industrial areas themselves and bring in others to help with the housing areas. Site grading and remediation could, again, at the end, latter part of next year, and into 2023, if all goes well, above ground construction in 2023 and beyond. And it's, you know, if, if, if the market is going well, eight to 10 years to absorb all of this, it takes quite a long time to develop a site of this size. So hopefully, eight to 10 years is what they're shooting for. Thank you for the time. I'd be glad to take any questions that you have.
Any questions for Mr. Dermody on the Hillcrest Master Plan? Let's see, Mr. Moore, Commissioner Moore?
Good, good morning. Thank you Commissioner. Thank you for the excellent presentation, Bill. There was a, a point earlier about building for people instead of just buildings themselves. I, I butchered that, but I did have some questions just around housing. Specifically, what are the household incomes being served on this site? And then my second question is, are there considerations for larger, non-traditional family sizes in, in the plans? Thank you.
Thank you Chair, Commissioner Moore. Good questions. At this point in time, our, our housing policy is, does not specify numbers of units for affordable housing, but rather provides general goals and priority guidance. So if affordable housing will happen, what are our types of affordable priorities? So it is, is rather general. And, and as far as what, where the housing units, what will get built, they'll depend in part on how much affordable there is versus how much market rate. The market rate in this area could be in the neighborhood of 80% AMI, which is technically considered affordable, at least for the, for the for sale units. So that could be some naturally occurring affordable that happens. But in general, we don't have details at, at this time as far as numbers of units at what levels because of the housing policy approach that we are taking on this. I'll, I'll also offer that Director Prera is much better versed in the affordable housing details as a former staff at Minnesota Housing. So if you have any more detailed questions about that, I defer to Mr. Prera. You also asked about, I'm sorry, Chair, there was one other question you asked that I did not answer, and that's about larger family sizes. That is something that has been discussed, but is not in the current housing policy as drafted.
And I would just add, Mr. Commissioner Moore, that the, the larger policy question with regards to housing that's affordable was sort of, was the presentation that we were going to be having today with regards to our authorities and powers that we would have to postpone until two weeks from now. So it is an ongoing issue and discussion that we're having in this commission. So seeing no additional questions, I don't believe we have to do anything on the, on this item. Thank you, Mr. Dermody, for the presentation. Moving on to the next item, it's old business. And then I'll ask for any new business or items that Commissioners would like to handle in future. Oh, Commissioner Perriman?
Yes, yes, I, I was looking forward to the Warner's presentation as well. I have some questions for that, I'll, I'll save. But so, of course, this is leading to our favorite topic of the Lexington Station Apartments. There's been, of course, justified community interest. And there's been questions about the findings that came from our discussions that went to the City Council. So I have a question about how, how the findings are translated. And then if we feel that the findings are not correctly translated, what's the process of looking into that?
Director Padilla?
To understand the question, I'm going to reiterate. So if the findings translated by staff of the commission or of the zoning committee, or can you say a little bit more?
Yeah, the, the, the motion and the information discussed by the Planning Commission, some feel that it was not accurately put into the findings. What we discussed and what we said was, the words were changed or added or adjusted from our intended point.
So Commissioner Perriman, just to understand your question as well, are you saying that you disagree with the language used in the resolution that was given to City Council?
Yes.
With the, with the language, okay. And your question is, is how could, how could Commissioners who disagree with the language and the resolution, and that's how, how it was presented, how to, how to correct or amend that?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Director Padilla?
Yeah, I, I think stepping back from, from that individual case, which is still, action at City Council is still pending, so I'm not going to comment on that specifically. Generally, we need to have, we, the ideal would have been having the resolution prepared ahead of the, you know, the meeting. And so, again, I'm going to remind Commissioners on these quasi judicial matters, do reach out to staff early, particularly if you disagree with the staff recommendation going in, from the staff report at Zoning Committee, or after Zoning Committee makes a decision, a recommendation rather, in that, in that week, that time period, reach out to staff by phone to, or email to ask or to question, ask us questions. If, if you'd like to go a different direction, you have staff that, that, you know, work, that, that, you know, work for the city and work for the commission. And as much as we can help prepare, help you prepare for an alternative motion that you'd like to make in advance, that is very helpful for us. And so that's, that's, that would be my comment, that, you know, reach out early and often. If you don't know who to talk to specifically, call me or email me, and then we'll figure this out. That's, it's, it's just a good reminder for, for both, especially, I, I think Zoning Committee knows this already, but, but folks who aren't on the Zoning Committee or, and or the new Commissioners, as much as we can do the work ahead of time, understand where you're at. You know, it's, it's fine if we don't always agree, staff and, and individual Commissioners, but just to be aware of what your perspective is, so that, you know, if you, you'd like to take a different slant than, than the committee or, or staff, that we're aware that we can work with you on some alternative language that will pass, you know, legal muster.
Well, I, that, that, I believe that's what we did. Myself, Commissioner Wong, and Mu Japao, you know, we tried to have a meeting. And we reached out in advance, things got delayed, and we had to continually reach out to get that meeting that took place. And then during that meeting, it seemed like it was more of encouraging us to go a certain way. And then I think Commissioner Taggeoff's information that he eventually brought to the table was some of the stuff we were looking for from city staff and was not there. So I guess this is a, again, something else, hoping to discuss with Warner and things during our talk. But so I believe we did do that, and then we're still at this place. So I'm wondering, is there? Yes, yeah, maybe it can't help with this situation, but moving forward, if we don't feel that the information from our, however long conversation is correctly put into the findings, is there anything that we can do?
So just, just to clarify, Commissioner Perriman, because I, I, I think it is just a general. One, it relates to this particular question that you have, but just as a general procedural question, the, the, the question, Louis, is when a Commissioner disagrees with the way that a resolution has been drafted and presented, is there a mechanism for that Commissioner to make an amendment to that language? As it appears to be more of a disagreement about a summary than it does about the findings? And maybe that's a question for Mr. Warner and for, at a later time.
Chair, yeah, I believe that would be, and if I'm understanding the point made, is, is there a mechanism to reconsider or reopen a Planning Commission resolution after it's been acted upon, whether there's a, a legal?
No, I, I believe the question is, the resolution is what it is, and the, and the record is what it is. But Commissioner Perriman, am, am I hearing you correct when you say that the way that it was summarized into the resolution is what you disagree with?
Correct, yes.
So, so it's not, it's not necessarily reopening anything? It's the way that it is conveyed going forward about the, the summary of the meeting and the language that was used by Commissioners. I believe that's what Commissioner Perriman is referring to. And correct me if I'm wrong, Commissioner Perriman, but that's the way I'm understanding your question.
Yes, that's correct. Yep.
So I think perhaps the, the avenue to go would be Louise, I, I wonder if you and and Mr. Warner could reach out to Mr. to Commissioner Perriman about what exactly it is that he disagrees and how it was summarized. And if, if there is an avenue for making that correction.
Yes, we'll do that, Chair and Commissioner Perriman.
Commissioner Tagheoff.
I had a sort of related question as we're on this subject. One thing which I, I definitely guidance on as a new commissioner is understanding what is the sort of reasonable timeframe for us to approve, for example, minutes from a planning commission meeting? Particularly when a high profile case like this gets to the council. It would seem to be helpful to have an approved version of minutes and that could be a means by which the planning commission could weigh in and raise concerns before it becomes a resolution. That's my, that's my first question, I have another, but I'll wait.
And then I'll, I'll send that to Louise, I, I do, I have noticed that approval of minutes have been delayed for quite a while and, and usually I, I think it's not a significant issue, but I, I do think as Commissioner Tagheoff just pointed out. In matters like this, it would have provided someone like Commissioner Perriman an opportunity to either make any corrections or suggest any additional comments that should be added into the minutes if he felt they weren't properly recorded. But Louise, or I don't know, what, where, where we're at with the minutes on that particular hearing.
Yeah, so we do action minutes right away after the commission meeting, so those are already there. The, I think you're talking about the longer minutes, planning commission minutes, which are typically a little delayed. We've been doing our best, frankly, during the pandemic. It's been a lot harder to, to get them turned around quickly. And that's just the staff, you know, it's a staffing capacity issue. I wish we could get them done quicker and turned around quicker, and so we are working on strategies to make them more streamlined, to turn them around quicker. But the action minutes are available and have been typically, those are done right after the meeting. So I do appreciate the, the, the concern and comment, I have the same concern, but we, we're doing our best.
Thank you, Director Ferreira, my, my other question is again, just perhaps out of curiosity. Once the planning commission makes a decision and that decision is appealed to city council, what role does staff and and legal play in, in, in helping city council contextualize and understand the findings? I, I watched the presentation, the original presentation at city council regarding the analysis development and certainly the developers' appeal grounds were, you know, were, were stated to the city council, but I, I was I, I would have expected a little bit more discussion around kind of the, the reasoning, the merits and that kind of stuff on, on both findings. I wonder whether that's something that gets discussed kind of privately or briefed separately, or whether everything, all interactions happen in the city council meeting.
Yeah, so we, Chair and Commissioner Tagheoff. So City Attorney's Office is counsel to, to staff and to council, city council. So they, as questions come up, they're available, you know, in advance of the council meeting. Staff and P D and in this case D S I are, you know, available to answer questions about the staff recommendation, kind of what happened at the individual meeting in terms of zoning committee or planning commission, or the decision happens or B Z A. To, to assist in sort of understanding where the, the members of the B Z A or the planning commission were at making that decision as, as input and context for what happens at the council meeting. Either, you know, initial consideration of the item or, you know, after, after the public hearing happens at city council. That answers your question, hopefully.
Commissioner Tagheoff, could you elaborate more on what exactly your concern? Was there, is there a specific concern of how it was presented as well, or?
Oh, just, just when I, I suppose we're told frequently, this is a quasi judicial process and when, when I've observed judicial process in the past, typically there's a sense of, you know, both positions are explained to the original, in this case, the original planning commission decision would be presented and contextualized at city council, given that they are hearing this de novo. And presumably then the developer might be asked to speak or someone, a attorney on their behalf. So I'm, I'm used to that style of presentation, let's say, where sort of there's, there's discussion about sort of why these findings were made, why the appellant disagrees and then potentially city staff or or attorney might say, well, here's, here's our answer to those points. And I didn't see that dynamic play out in the city council meeting and so I thought my curiosity is sort of whether that happens in a different forum or it was, I'm, I'm relative to the unit, I'm trying to, I'm trying to understand kind of what typically happens in these in, in these, in these scenarios, you know, with, with the, with the, with the aim of making sure that city council members voting on these issues do have the, the best and fullest information before them.
Thank you for your comments and I, I will add to that. And I don't know, I, I guess I always assume, I assumed that that process was occurring and I haven't seen the video or I wasn't, I didn't watch live when that was occurring. As, as a caveat to that though, as well, I, I do know that at times commissioners have sort of testified or provided testimony to the city council in their own individual capacity with regards to certain items that even the planning commission voted, so I, I, I hope that that's not a necessity. And, and I, I hear both Commissioner Perriman and and your concerns about this and, you know, I, I don't know what else to say about it at the moment. Louise, is there any comment that, that you'd like to apply to those statements?
Chair, no, I, I don't think, I mean, I, I'll note that, you know, as commissioners, individual commissioners, you once the commission has acted and we're outside of the quasi judicial decision period, you, you can comment as individuals. And I believe Commissioner Perriman, or not, sorry, Commissioner Tagheoff and Commissioner Lindicky did do that for the, the council public hearing on that, that particular case. Just to, you know, acknowledging, you know, this is your own perspective and not, not representing the commission. Particularly helpful, I think, when you know, it's, it's, and like in this case, it was a pretty divided vote in terms of, you know, basically half and half for and against. But I, I won't comment any further in terms of city council process just because yeah, I'm not, I mean, you know, sometimes we're asked to participate in those, those conversations, but, but sometimes not. And we're mostly, mostly just providing, you know, information about the decision that criteria staff used, what happened at the planning commission or the zoning committee. And just clarifying those pieces as inputs into their, their process of decision making.
Okay, so I'll, I'll trust that Commissioner Perriman, I, I trust that Director Padilla and Mr. Warner will reach out to you and hopefully allay your concerns or address them and find a remedy for them. Also, if anybody else feels that that, that is true for them, I would encourage you to reach out to Director Padilla so that you can be included in that conversation. So with that said, is there anything else you'd like to add, Commissioner Perriman?
Oh, sounds good, thank you.
Thank you. So with that said, I'll ask, we've had a long meeting and so I'll ask for any new business. And if there isn't any new business, given it's already ten thirty, I'll, I'll ask if there's anybody that wants to suggest something for the agenda at a future meeting. Seeing none. I will go ahead and adjourn the April second, two thousand and twenty one St. Paul Planning Commission meeting. Thank you, everybody, for your time and for your very deliberate discussions today. And I hope that for the issues that were raised, we can reach a resolution on them. And I look forward to working with you on, on all these matters going forward. Have a good weekend, everyone.
Thank you, goodbye.
Thank you.
Thank you.